Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the regular session meeting of the Leewood governing body here on July the twenty first, two thousand twenty five. Well, me, I'll come to order and I'll ask the clerk to call the rule, please.
Debra Philla.
Here.
Mary Larson.
Here.
Sheri Gied.
Here.
Lisa Harrison.
Here.
Julie Kane.
Here.
Stephen Castor.
Here.
Chuck Sipple.
I know he was going to join us by Zoom, but I don't see him on yet, so we'll mark him as absent for the time being.
Alan Sunkel.
Again, expected him to be on Zoom, but will mark him absent for the time being.
And Mayor Mark Elkins is present and presiding.
So six of eight are here. That constitutes a quorum, and we can move on to the business of the evening. And with that, I would ask everyone to rise with me and join me in the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Does staff have any revisions or amendments to the agenda as it was published?
No, Mayor.
If not, is there a motion to approve the agenda as it was published?
So moved. Second?
Thank you, Ms. Harrison. Thank you, Ms. Larson. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the agenda as it was published, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ayes have it, and the agenda is unanimously approved. The fourth item on our agenda are the citizens' comments, and this is an opportunity for the public to use the opportunity to make comments about city matters that are not on the agenda this evening, or about other items on the consent agenda. We welcome those who have signed in, and we note that we'll allot four minutes tonight to each individual to provide us with their views on various items that relate to the city. And this evening, we have two residents who have signed in. First is Heather Curry of ninety-four forty High Drive, Leewood. Ms. Curry, welcome.
Also, Mayor, I would note that Mr. Sipple is now on.
All right. The record will reflect that Mr. Sipple has joined us. And Ms. Curry, I just note that that little box in front of you on your left, I guess it's your left, it'll blink as you come close to the end of your time. So as you see that light begin to blink, if you can finish up, we'd be grateful. So if you could introduce yourselves and make sure I had your address correct for the record, we'd be great.
Good evening. My name is Heather Curry. I live at ninety-four forty High Drive in Leewood, which is right at the intersection of Ninety-Fifth Street and High Drive. I am here tonight, first of all, I want to say that I heartily approve of the street diet that's recommended for Hundred and Third Street between State Line and Mission Road. I think that's a great thing for the city of Leewood. However, knowing that there are no capital improvement plans or funds in the work, in the works for Ninety-Fifth Street for at least five years, including resurfacing, and knowing that Ninety-Fifth Street carries probably three times as much traffic as Hundred and Third Street, and knowing that Ninety-Fifth Street is considered a major thoroughfare east and west, I would still like you to consider a street diet for that portion of Ninety-Fifth Street that includes Leewood. It's about a mile. And I would like you to consider that for the following reasons. The first is that this portion of Ninety-Fifth Street, until you get to the Forum and Ranch Mart, is all residential. There are thirty homes with driveways that enter and exit off of Ninety-Fifth Street, not to mention hundreds of Leewood residents that live north and south of Ninety-Fifth Street, and this is their main access. Number two, despite the fine efforts of the Leewood Police Department, there are still, the thirty-five mile an hour speed limit is not consistently obeyed. In fact, it is more often not obeyed than obeyed. Number three, left turns from the neighborhoods onto Ninety-Fifth Street, because Ninety-Fifth Street is hilly, if you ever drive it, they're not steep hills, but they're enough that they obstruct the view of traffic. Some streets, you only have like three seconds of clear before, to go, before a car might appear. So it's not, it's always taking a chance when you exit onto Ninety-Fifth Street. Number four, in most cases, the sidewalks are adjacent to the street, right next to the street. These sidewalks are used often by children, dog walkers, children on scooters and bicycles, other people on bicycles, and a lot of walkers, many of whom look similar to me. And number five, the city of Leewood has never shied away from enacting rules and requirements that are unique and give the city its special image. I think of clotheslines and sheds and fences, you know, you name it. We don't mind making Leewood special. So a street diet for Ninety-Fifth Street might even be accomplished with just restriping, a center turn lane, bike lanes on either side that make the sidewalk traffic, the sidewalks a lot safer for Leewood residents. Should this street diet, however, not be feasible, would you consider an ordinance to decrease the speed limit to twenty-five? It's just a mile or less. And I think speeding tickets alone would pay for the signage. So if you can approve the traffic circle at Tomahawk Creek Parkway and Hundred and Seventeenth Street, which is, in my opinion, hurts bicyclists and helps very few people, it seems to me that you would find it easy and appropriate to put the safety of hundreds of Leewood residents above the convenience of people from other cities traveling east to west through this portion of Ninety-Fifth Street. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Curry. We very much appreciate you sharing your perspective with us tonight. And we'll refer your comments over to David Lay in our Public Works section, so he can consider your perspective and your comments. But again, thank you for being with us this evening. The second name on my list is a familiar name, along with a familiar face. We're pleased to welcome back Mr. Patrick Geschin, sorry, who served as an interim basis in Ms. Stoddard's role for a considerable period of time with great distinction. So welcome back, sir. And I understand you're now a resident.
That's correct, Mayor Elkins, and thank you for the warm welcome. So the whole purpose is to come back and to thank you, my former bosses, for their wonderful support from June of twenty-two to February of twenty-three, when Ms. Diane had the pleasure of coming in, and to say hello to the new council people that I've not had, although Sheri was coming on the Planning Commission as I was leaving. So when I told my friends about the move to Leewood, and my, one of my better friends, who's also my insurance agent, said, "Do you remember a guy by the name of Victor Kayam in the eighties? He had this commercial that said, 'I liked the razor so much, I bought the company.'" So he said, "You liked being city administrator of Leewood, excuse me, so much, I decided to move there." And we love it. And it's great. It was great to serve you. It's great to be a resident here. And of course, Lisa, being in your ward, you know, that's, you know. But if you ever need any help for committee or anything like that, I just want to let you know that I'll be available for that. It's good to be back with you.
Well, thank you very much, and welcome to Leewood. We're glad to have you as a resident. I don't believe I have any proclamations this evening, and there are no presentations or recognition, so we come next to Special Business, which is a resolution authorizing and directing the issuance, sale, and delivery of a general obligation temporary notes, Series twenty-two-five-one, of the city of Leewood, providing for the levy and collection of an annual tax if necessary for the purpose of paying the principal and interest on said notes as they become due, making certain covenants and agreements to provide for the payment and security thereof, and authorizing certain other documents and actions connected therewith. Mr. Cobby, I presume you'd like to be heard on this matter?
Yes, as much as you would love to hear from me. Excellent. I'm gonna let David Artterberry kind of give you the overview of the sale and some of the stuff that he did with that process, and then I'll stand for any questions you might have after that.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cobby. Mr. Artterberry, welcome back.
Thank you, and good evening. The resolution you have in front of you is the final step that you'll need to take to issue the city's Series twenty-two, two thousand twenty-five dash one temporary notes. And just kind of as a quick refresher, last time I was here, we discussed how these notes were going to be sold, and we talked about doing, instead of a regular public offering where we get a rating and we have an offering document, instead we'd try a private placement, where we actually took bids directly from banks who would be purchasing the notes directly themselves and holding them. So that's what we did. We put together a little term sheet, a little two-page term sheet, that Don distributed to about, oh, eighteen banks or so back on June eighteenth. Bids were due on July seven, or July third, and I was real pleased to report that the city got a total of six bids, and I think you should have in front of you a copy of those bids. Want to give you a little bit of color, though, leading up to the bidding. The bids were due at noon on the third, and I was getting copies of all, I thought I was getting copies of all of the bids coming in, and I knew we really wanted to target an interest rate of a little bit below four percent. And all of the bids had come in, except the bid from Commerce, when noon hit. And I was looking at the bids, and I said, "Oh, no, none of them are below four percent." At about twelve oh one, I called Don, and Don said, "Hey, I've been in meetings, but I got one more bid to send you." And he sent me the bid by Commerce Bank. And so needless to say, I was very happy to see that bid. It's a great result. The rate that you got on these, you know, I can't compare it apples to apples to a public offering, because sort of, you know, the path not taken. But what I can tell you is I feel very comfortable in saying that you could not have done any materially better in terms of your overall borrowing cost with a public offering. This result is a very good result. We're pleased to see. And just as a refresher here, these notes are going to pay off an outstanding note that the city has. The city is also contributing about three point nine million dollars to pay off those old notes. So the new note size is going to be about, is going to be exactly eleven point two one million dollars, whereas the old note size was about fourteen point seven million. So, welcome. Any questions you have about the process, or the outcome, or any, the action you'd have to take tonight?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Artterberry. We appreciate all your efforts on our behalf. Questions for Mr. Artterberry or Mr. Cobby? Yes, Ms. Harrison?
Thank you. The additional fees range from five thousand to fifty thousand dollars. Is that normal in this process?
Yeah, it can be. Private placement purchasers, a triple P, that, a lot of times, they will charge added fees above the interest rate that they want to cover their own legal expenses, and sometimes their cost of, like, credit analysis. Although, honestly, those two fees at the bottom of the list of bidders, those were a little excessive.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harrison. Other questions for Mr. Artterberry or Mr. Cobby? If not, thank you, Mr. Artterberry. We appreciate your time tonight. Is there a motion relative to the resolution to authorize the issuance, sale, and delivery of general obligation temporary notes?
So moved.
That was Ms. Philla. Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Larson. Any discussion? All those in favor of adopting the resolution that would authorize and direct the issuance, sale, and delivery of general obligation temporary notes for Series twenty-two-five dash one, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted on a seven-zero vote. The consent agenda this evening is amazingly short. Congratulations to staff. It's a great summer gift for you all to give us. That being said, are there any of these items that anyone on the governing body would like to pull for additional discussion or questions of staff? Ms. Harrison?
Item A, as in Apple.
Thank you. Any others? If not, is there a motion to be had to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item A?
So moved.
Thank you, Dr. Castor. Second? Thank you, Ms. Harrison. Any discussion? All those in favor of adopting consent items B, C, and D, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ayes have it, and the consent agenda with the exception of item A is approved. Item A is a resolution approving a revised final plat for Leewood subdivision lots five oh three B, five thirty B one, and seven sixteen B, located south of Ninety-first Street and west of Lee Boulevard. Ms. Harrison?
Couple questions about this. I think that because the lots were named as numbers, I was having trouble tracking in my brain, instead of saying
I did the same.
Smith, Anderson, and Jones lots maybe would have been easier. But, so looking at the lots, north, south, and east, who's getting the Mill, the Mill Square? North, south, or east?
It is going to the one to the east.
Well, that is not the answer I thought you were gonna give me. Logically, I thought it made more sense for the people on the north or the south to get it.
So I believe the owner to the east already owned that.
Right.
And so it's combining that with her lot. And so what we understood was that the owners to the north and the south, there is a little bit of confusion back there, as tends to be with property lines over the years. You know, fences go up, and people aren't quite exactly sure where their property line was. And so the property owner to the east had already been using a little bit of those other lots. They all thought that it was already hers. And so this is truly just cleaning up kind of what was already in place. They officially sold her those portions that had already been utilized as part of her yard, and so just kind of cleaning everything up.
Very good. Okay. Well, we've got some strange-shaped lots up there. But
We certainly do.
I see this coming back to us in six months for the folks directly to the west, where we have almost an identical problem with a funny little trapezoid that three people might be thinking is theirs.
Yeah, there's a lot of those. When you start looking around, a lot of those kind of leftover little pieces up north, that we would certainly never allow to happen now, when we would be planning a subdivision. So those would be considered nonconforming. And so unless they want to basically do something on that, build something, or otherwise, you know, divide it up, they don't have to do anything. So those little kind of remnant pieces can stay that way, nonconforming. If whoever owns that one that you're referring to, if they ever want to officially incorporate that into whichever lot that they own and make it one lot, combine those two lots, we would see them come back. But unless they have a compelling reason or need to do that, it may never happen.
But somebody's mowing this. Somebody, somebody believes it's theirs. It's just a matter of
So we, we did look at this when we went through and we were reviewing this, and I cannot remember off the top of my head who owns that little remnant one back there. But it is one of the adjoining property owners, one of those lots that touches it, either the one to the direct north or the direct west. I can't remember, again, exactly which one it is. But one of those adjoining property owners does own it and does maintain it. They just haven't had a reason to need to combine those.
Very good.
And they do, and they pay taxes on them, and
Yep.
everyone's getting what they need.
Very good. I'm glad it hasn't caused a problem in the past with somebody wanting to build a tiny house back there or something.
You and me both.
Yep. All right. No further questions. That was all I wanted clarification on.
Ms. Phil?
I was just gonna insert that I heard, and I don't know this for a fact, that some folks suggested that that was consciously done in Old Leewood to allow for little pocket parks that people could share in their backyards. And that's what they were doing with Dexter. I never saw anybody put playgrounds or anything, and they kind of just, anyway, that's what I heard, you know. I don't know whether that was true or not, or whether it's accidental. But it does make sense, because they do have those in other places, like in England, they have parks that are back up and are surrounded by the backyards of everyone's home, so.
Thank you, Ms. Philla. Other questions for Ms. Hurley? Ms. Harrison, would you? Thank you, Ms. Harrison. Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Kane. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor of adopting the resolution approving the revised final plat for Leewood subdivision lots five oh three B, five thirty B one, and seven sixteen B, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ayes have it, and the resolution is unanimously adopted. We come now to the mayor's report. I have just a few things myself. It seems like maybe we've hit a little bit of the summer slows, and we're just about to pick up with the fall fast pretty quick. But we were really excited last Monday to welcome City Councilor Sabrina Lim, that's L-I-M, who visited City Hall and visited with Ms. Stoddard and myself. Ms. Lim is a member of the City Council of Taipei City, Taiwan. She's visiting the United States and visiting a number of cities all across the country, but was aware of our sister-city relationship with Elon, and wanted the opportunity to meet us, having been sponsored by a number of Taiwanese-Americans who live in our community. Interestingly, I thought she described Elon as the garden spot of Taiwan. I was quite impressed that we had such a long and distinguished relationship with Elon. We had a great conversation, and it was really interesting. She was, in my estimation, of course, a very young woman in her early to mid thirties. And in her community, there are sixty on the city council, and her constituency consisted of two hundred thousand people. So her campaigns are significantly different than ours. One that Diane, I think, found particularly interesting is one of the best ways to campaign in Taipei City is to follow the garbage trucks. Because in Taipei, in Taipei City, the garbage trucks announce their presence like an ice cream truck does here, and everybody comes out of their homes to deposit their trash. So if you're, if you're a political and you want to get people's attention, you just come out, follow the garbage truck, and you get to talk to people along the way that way. So, an interesting, different world that they have there. And obviously, the folks don't put their garbage out, they just keep it inside their house until the garbage truck comes with the clown, the clown-like music, and they come out to deposit their trash and to hear their candidates speak their piece. So it was, it was a great, it was a great opportunity to speak with her. And she, of course, as, as the people in Taiwan are so welcoming, wants to get invited, any one or all of us to visit her in Taipei at the same time we go to visit our friends in Elon. Plans for the World Cup in Johnson County continue to evolve. Ms. Stoddard and I have had a number of conversations with the staff at Johnson County on plans to establish a circulator bus route that will connect key areas of Johnson County and the fan experience at the Liberty Memorial. The good news is that the, the cost is still up in the air, but it continues to drop. So that's all a very positive thing. There's still more work to be done on that, and we'll have more later. In addition, the ad hoc Leewood World Cup Committee met just this afternoon to discuss a variety of potential events with members of the Leewood Chamber of Commerce, city staff, and two of our city council members. And I think that Ms. Harrison may have additional comment on that here shortly. And last, we announced the kickoff of Leewood Rooted and Reaching, which is our project to modernize the comprehensive plan and development ordinance just last week. We've already received more than a hundred expressions of interest in participating in the process. Now, under Ms. Hurley and Planning Commission Chairman David Coleman's leadership, we will be convening a steering committee in the very near future, and interviews of key stakeholders will begin shortly. In addition, our community questionnaire is online at the city's website, and Ms. Hurley, correct me if I've got any of this wrong. And I encourage everyone to take a few minutes to complete the questionnaire as we get, begin to understand what our community wants Leewood to look like in the coming years. And that, oh, and one last thing. I almost forgot it, even though I wrote it in my own handwriting here. We have a birthday to celebrate this evening. She maintains that it's some anniversary of her fifty-fourth birthday, but congratulations to Ms. Kane. And that then completes my report. Any questions for me? Well, with that, we do come to the city administrators' report. Ms. Stoddard, do you wish to be heard?
I have no report this evening, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Stoddard. And that brings us to council members' reports. I guess I skipped over that. Ms. Harrison, I believe you had a report or a request?
A report slash request, yes. I would like to request that we work with staff to schedule a work session in the next month or so to discuss all the great ideas that have come out of the World Cup Committee conversations. We've been meeting for six or seven months, I think. We've been meeting for six or seven months, I think, maybe a little longer, and we've generated a lot of conversation, a lot of great ideas. But I came to realize today at the meeting that if we don't make some decisions soon, we're gonna miss this boat, so to speak. And so I realized that we're the ones that need to make some of the decisions so that staff can move forward. So we can take the conversations that have happened at these work sessions. Ms. Kane's been there. Ms. Stoddard's been there. The mayor's been there. Several staff. Our chiefs have been there. So we're well represented with regards to the committee, and we can certainly invite Stephanie Meyer to be there and anybody else that you see fit. But just so that we can decide some important things so our staff can move forward with important logistics like school buses and porta potties, which might be the make or break for all of our activities, so.
Thank you, Ms. Harrison. Questions or comments for Ms. Harrison or her suggestion that we ask staff to look for a time for a work session? Ms. Kane?
Yeah, I would echo. Thank you. I didn't know you were gonna do that, but thank you. I had a conversation with Chris Claxton after the meeting today, and she was echoing the same thing, that she's feeling like we're getting a little bit behind if you start reading in the Post and whatnot. So the city's doing this, and the city is doing that. So things are starting to... Dates are starting to get snatched, and ideas are starting to form in that, you know, we do need to at least establish when, and then the what can follow. But we need to get on the schedule to be able to work with fire and police and, you know, carve our section of time if nothing else. So thank you for that. I would second that initiative.
Thank you, Ms. Kane. Other questions or comments? I'll just add for the record that one of the things that we have to consider is how we're going to address the 250th anniversary, I guess, of the founding of the republic, which happens to coincide with this signature event, this international event. And there are some cities who have already, or at least one city I know of, that purported to cancel their 4th of July celebration, but I heard today that maybe they're rethinking that. So a lot to be discussed, and of course, with various international situations economically and whatnot, and the cost of fireworks, that's one of the things that we'll need to take up and make a decision on fairly quickly. So Ms. Stoddard, if you could take that in advisement to see if we can find a date for a work session, we'd be grateful. And I also ask the record to note that it was a council member and not the mayor who requested this particular work session, so this one's not on me. Any other reports from council members? If not, we'll move to item 12, which are committee recommendations. Pardon me. This evening, we have a number. First is item A, which is an ordinance approving a rezoning from RP4, planned apartment residential district to RP3, planned cluster attached residential, a preliminary plan, preliminary plat, final plan, and final plat for Waterford of Leewood located south of 137th Street and west of Mission Road. Ms. Hurley, do you wish to be heard?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. As you said, this is a request for rezoning from RP4, which is planned apartment residential district, to RP3, which is planned cluster attached residential district of approximately 137th and Mission Road. This is the request for rezoning, preliminary plan, final plan, preliminary plat, and final plat to allow for the construction of 19 cluster residential buildings. It's an approximately 11-acre site, and there would be a total of 60 units between those 19 buildings that would result in an overall density of five, about five and a half dwelling units per acre. There were a couple of previously approved plans on this site that you may recall from the past several years. In 2016, there was an approved special use permit for an assisted living facility on this property. And then in 2019, a special use permit for an independent living facility. Both those plans have since expired. So just kinda to orient you on the map, it is, you can see it highlighted in blue just south of 137th Street, on the west side of Mission Road is the property that we are talking about. Here is the overall site plan. You can see the layout of all 19 of those buildings with the associated street network that would be incorporated in there. And then just a kind of visual representation, a little bit dressed up with the landscaping that would be present. And then one thing to note, there was a BZA consideration on this property or on this project. There is a fire access sort of turnaround drive that was needed in here for public safety purposes that was required by our fire codes. And in order to fit that in, they needed to request a variance to allow for an encroachment within the front yard setback. Our front yard setback requirements make no distinction between buildings and pavement. And so the pavement in this case is gonna be approximately three feet from the property line. The standard requirement for a front yard setback is 30 feet. As part of this request that you're considering tonight, there is a request for a deviation to allow for a 22 and a half-foot front yard setback for the overall development. Obviously, this still would encroach into that 22 and a half feet. So that did need to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals. That did happen in June, and the BZA did approve their deviation request, so that is taken care of. And then just to go back to the site plan, so you can kinda see where it is. It is just north of the building labeled as Building 6 on the far east side of the property. You can see that little drive there. And again, that will just be for fire truck access purposes, and it will be signed and marked that it is just for emergency purposes and is not utilized as a parking area. So that will be very clear to residents in this development. Then just to go through some of the building elevations, you have all of them in your packet that's been distributed. Each of the buildings is gonna be unique, but just wanted to give you a little bit of an overall flavor for what is proposed out here with some of those buildings. Some are one-story, some are two-story, so there will be a nice variety within the development to give a nice appearance of a residential neighborhood. So I can answer any questions you might have. The applicant is here as well, and does have a presentation for you.
Thank you, Ms. Hurley. Questions from Ms. Hurley? Ms. Harrison?
It doesn't always have to be me, but I have a question and a request, really. I can jokingly say that the naming causes me pause. We last year, or in the last couple of years, approved a development called East Village and another one called Village East. And if there isn't anything more confusing to a group of people, it's when you call it the wrong thing and people take note. There is a 35- or 40-year-old subdivision just a half mile away called Waterford. And so to name this Waterford of Leewood feels a little strange to me. That subdivision is from 127th Street to 132nd Street along Mission Road. And is a rather significant-sized subdivision for that part of town. And so I would wonder if we might, as a city, have a say to tweak that just a smidge so that it doesn't give the impression or confuse that it's somehow affiliated with this other neighborhood. There's a million names out there. So I know that the property management or... There's been a sign on their Waterford Properties for, you know, 30 years over there, but I never thought that they'd actually name it something like that. That was like the commercial real estate company that owned it or something like that. So are we, as a city, allowed to make that suggestion? Are we allowed to make that suggestion? Can we just ask them to consider something other, you know, British-sounding knockoff name or something?
I believe we can make any request that we want or any suggestion that we want, and we can certainly have that discussion with the applicant. And they can probably speak a little bit more to why they chose this name when they come up for their presentation.
Very good. Thank you.
Other questions from Ms. Hurley? Ms. Kane?
So I noticed that I read that these are private streets and private street lights. I thought we weren't approving private streets so much anymore. I thought we were kinda getting away from that, because as time goes on, they come back and they beg us to not make them private anymore.
I know in general, that's the case. I would probably defer those two questions to Public Works Director David Lay if he wants to come in and speak to that as the maintenance of public right of ways and streets falls within the Public Works Department.
Thank you for that. And then can you remind me, I see the heights... This is averaging 26 feet tall, give or take, which I applaud the height. I don't know which one our developers are. These guys? Thank you. Before I go on, I echo this comment about Waterford, because I too live half a block away from Waterford and half since 1990. So even when we were in HOA meeting, which was last February, people were talking about the Village of Ironwood, or what is this? Waterford Village? What? Waterford what? And I was like, wait, Waterford on 133rd? Hey, had me totally confused. So the fact that the Waterfords are half a mile from each other and not even a quarter from a mile from each other, and as a residential real estate agent, when you're searching Waterfords, you're gonna confuse a whole bunch of people. But anyway, I wondered about the private streets. I wondered about the private street lights. And then I also... Thank you for ownership. I liked seeing that these were going to be owned. These are not rentals. Amen to that. And that they are 26 feet tall, but I was wondering, how was... How tall was the Bright Star? Do you remember? And I meant to call you early, Julie, not put you on the spot. Bright Star and then the other one, that was considerably taller than what this is being proposed to be, is my recollection. It was like four feet or four stories tall, at least.
They were. I don't know off the top of my head how tall those were, but yes, both of those were multi-story buildings.
I wanna say, help me out, anybody remember? I think I...
Three or four.
Yeah, they were. I wanna say three or four. My brain's going four, and then there was gonna be a big pool. Remember all that? And that actually ended up getting approved, and the residents, you know, they were okay with it. So I personally think the fact that these are 26 feet tall and they are being owned... I don't know. I'll talk to the developers here in a second. Are they condos? Are they townhomes? I talked about, I touched that before. But I did question the private streets. I'd like to talk about that. And then also, A-plus, in my opinion, to the tree conservation easement, which is up to, what, 65 feet or something of this, something like that, I read.
Yeah, and that has consistently been a conversation with the neighborhood to the south and through all of the plans that have come through for this site. That has been something that staff's been very diligent in requiring is maintained in order to preserve that tree preservation area between the development and the existing neighborhood to the south. And this developer was happy to work with us on keeping that there.
That's awesome. And then I applaud that, if you read in the minutes, they have been speaking to the neighbors about this for three to four years, so that's a long time, and that's a concerted effort. So I appreciate that. They changed the orientation of the homes, so the backs are, you know, the... Changed the orientations of the home as they face Leewood Meadows behind them, so I really appreciate that. There was something else I was really appreciating, and what would that be, Julie Kane? Oh, this is it. Well, this is... I take it back. I'm not really appreciating it. I am wondering, if you will recall, Villa Milano is due east, right? When Villa Milano came in, and this is a different animal than their apartments, but we asked them specifically to ring it with single-family homes on purpose. It was a wider development. But just wanted to, again, to plant that in your seed that... Or plant that in your head, that this is, yeah, that's not happening here. Where there is technically a... Well, there is a landscape buffer, but if you recall, we made that with Village East. We had the single-family homes as a buffer, with a height buffer. We did that with Aventina, not Aventino, but Villa Milano. And but with this only being 26 feet tall, perhaps that eliminates that need. But those are all things that caught my ear and my eye and my brain as I was reading this. Thank you.
Any other questions from Ms. Hurley? I believe Mr. Lay has entered the room. David, do you mind coming forward and talking a little bit about where we stand from a policy standpoint on private streets and street lights?
Sure. So the LDO does not prohibit private streets. It just mentions that if you build a private street, it has to meet public standards, which for us would be the asphalt thickness is what we're mostly concerned with. And then also, the concrete materials also match what the public standards are. And so we do allow, so we've had the Village East or the East Village. Those are private streets. And then Lashbrook, on one portion of his site, at one time had private streets also.
Still does, Lashbrook?
I don't recall if Lashbrook came back in and modified that. It was on the north side of 137th Street, on the west side of High Drive. He had townhomes that he was doing a private cul-de-sac, but that was approved. But they're not prohibited in the LDO, private streets.
Right. Well, again, we've had that, have we not? Where years later, they come back to us and beg us to take their streets over, because they get, once they get used up and old, and they need to replace them, and they come back to us and beg, so.
And a lot of times, the problems that we run into is when they try to dedicate the right of way to us. The homes no longer meet their building setbacks and things like that because of our right of way requirement. So if we were to require that on this site, there would be at least two buildings that would have to be removed.
Oh, there you go.
That's all I had for David. But I did notice, on stipulation number six and number seven, they said, prior to the governing body meeting, and I didn't ask Julie if those stipulations had been met. Because six and seven said, prior to the governing body meeting, the applicant shall revise the final development plan to include the addition of berms and/or walls, laddy-laddy. And then number seven, prior to the meeting, they shall revise... The stipulation has been satisfied. Well, that's not written on my piece of paper, but thank you for that. I guess I don't get the updated ones. I don't want before the board. Okay, never mind.
Yes, they were all...
I can see that it's written on theirs, but it's not written on mine, so I'm...
They were all satisfied, yes.
Okay, thank you. Yeah. See? Is it written on mine?
We believe you, Councilwoman Kane. We absolutely believe you. Mr. Lay, if you wouldn't mind coming back. I'm sorry, Ms. Kane got in before I could follow up with you, so.
Sorry, sorry.
No worries. You mentioned that the requirements for private streets are that they meet, apparently, certain specifications for the, with respect to the quality of the private streets, correct?
That's correct. With the asphalt thickness and the subgrade, as a lot of the issues we had in the past with private subdivisions is the cost for maintenance. And then when they would go in there, the pavement was really thin, and so there was really no way for them to maintain it. So that's why the city requires it to meet our standards, which is eight inches of asphalt.
And that's exactly where I was going. I know that I've had at least two requests in the last year for us to consider permitting the subdivision to dedicate the street back to us. And as I understood it, there were issues. Were those issues in terms of the... Do you recall, were the issues in terms of the quality of the street? Or was it actually the dimensions of the street, if you will?
So on the, what the city has accepted back in the past, we've required the subdivision to replace the roadway, and then we put that in a benefit district back to those property owners. So they brought, they themselves brought it up to city standard and then dedicated the right of way. We've had a couple other subdivisions that have requested to become public, but there were some issues. If they gave us the right of way, they didn't meet the setbacks, and then they no longer pursued trying to become public.
So in this particular instance, the private streets would meet the specifications with the exception of the two setback issues that you mentioned a minute ago, correct?
That's correct. The setback would be the issue.
Of course, that doesn't prevent us from changing the standards 10 years from now and creating a similar problem to what we've had.
Right.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Other questions from Mr. Lay or Ms. Hurley? Ms. Harrison?
Oh, quick question, David. Who plows the private streets? Do they plow it?
Right. Those residents, Public Works does not get in to do any maintenance on those private streets or even do snow removal.
Okay. So the benefit of the private streets is that they can fit more units in? That they're, it's more dense. Is that correct?
That's correct. There's more, they can get more buildings on the site having private streets than if they were public.
Gotcha. Thank you.
So they're excused from the setbacks?
Right.
Yeah.
Unless...
Julie?
I mean, there's some, life, safety, fire has some setback requirements, evidently, but...
Yes, then you kinda take away the need for like a front setback along every street. Each of those streets internal wouldn't have, you know, the same front setback as you would if it was a public right of way. So they can, yeah, be a little bit more dense, get some more units in there, get that, more of that clustered feel without having the standard setback that you would if you had the public right of way that you were dealing with.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Hurley. Other questions? If not, I believe the applicant's here. Oh, I'm sorry, Julie. Ms. Harrison has one more question.
One more. Another naming question. I've read that the streets, the proposed, sorry, just lost it. The proposed streets have not been named, the name, street naming and addresses will occur at a later date. But in the map, they've got it named as Waterford Circle. Is there a preference in the city, and maybe this is a David Lay question, I don't know. Anywhere you go in Johnson County, if you're on Sagamore, you know you're between State Line and Mission. Anywhere you go in Johnson County, if you're on Alhambra or Catalina, everybody knows you're between Mission and Row. You get where I'm going with this? When you start making up new names for new streets in subdivisions, even if they're private streets, suddenly people have a little more trouble, I know everybody's using GPS these days. But again, is there a, is, is that a reason again to say we have a standard? In fact, the whole county has a standard, the streets between Mission and Row, pick one of these. In fact, they're alphabetical, A, B, C, D, E, F, G, if you didn't know that.
Alhambra, Buena Vista, Catalina, Del Mar, El Monte, Fontana, Granada.
It's great, it's like better than the presidents or the states in the order they were added to the union. But is there, do we have a practice or do we have a preference in our city naming of new streets?
So, yeah, there is a street grid, I'm actually not sure what the answer to that is for private streets, David. I don't know if you know if the street grid applies, if, yeah.
There's an address committee.
Okay.
There's a naming and address committee? Did I hear you say there's?
Yeah, David, if you could come closer to the mic, so we've got the record.
I believe the addressing committee would come up with the name for the streets. And they determine it based on some pre-approved street names that they have, which kind of follows the grid.
I would like to be on that committee.
Public Works is not on that, so that's planning and police and fire, I believe.
I learned something new, ten years. Thank you, all right, another suggestion for the builder when they get up here, thank you.
Other questions? All right, I do believe that the applicant is here, and we would invite you to come forward, sir. If you could state your name and address for us, we'd be interested in what you have to say.
Mr. Mayor and members of City Council, my name is Scott Sloggy, Sloggy Architects, we're located at four thousand six hundred Madison Suite three fifty in Kansas City, Missouri. I'm excited to show to you tonight our vision for this project. We appreciate, Ms. Kane, your comments, and hopefully I'll be able to answer those through this presentation or during a Q and A. And by the way, happy birthday. So a couple of things I want to share with you is that this is the same presentation we made to the Planning Commission with some embellishments. For your eyes only, we're going to show a, an improved video at the end of this presentation that shows you, I think, a lot more detail and how the, the buildings will feel both day and night. With me tonight also is Mr. Doug Hoffman, who is a visionary developer for this project, who will also be here for any questions you may have. And Mr. Sean Bryant, who is our civil engineer. As we go forward here in this project, I think it's been commendable working with the planning staff to work through many of the details that we have here. And of course, we would be open to considering what the name of the street should be so that it is, to your point, more of a wayfinding device and is in keeping with the grid you have here in the city, we're open to that. Even the idea of changing the name, if there's a better name that conveys what we hope to intend to show here for development and is in keeping with the proximity of this development, we're open to that too. But for now, our branding is Waterford, whether it's the Waterford Commons or some other name, that might be a deviation from that, I think we're open to that. This site plan's important to start with because, I'm not sure why this is doing this. There we go. It shows some of the key ingredients that informed us in this design. And as Ms. Kane pointed out, one thing that was really important was working with the staff. And working with the neighbors to the south. As mentioned, this has been a, a long process. And what was really important was that tree conservation easement. You'll see here in the site plan, there is this section cut, this black line that runs north-south. So there'll be subsequent images that show that in that section, it'll be important for you to see how these units relate to the single-family homes to the south. It's also important to note that we have social gathering places planned throughout the development. And that's going to help neighbors to get to know each other through social interaction with fire pits and water features, private gathering places that are located strategically throughout the site plan. It all culminates with a central location where the pool house is and the pool, again, in close proximity to all the units. So this was what, what caused us to form this development. Yes, we did ask for a deviation on the, as we provided additional green space for which we'd have that bonus, be able to do that. This shows proximity of some of those elements. One thing you should also note that the fact we turned the buildings so their orientation is north-south, not east-west, to your point, Ms. Kane, the impact visually has been diminished. Also, all these units with, with a few exceptions are reverse story and a half. So we have walkouts, and so we're embedding the units into the landscape, again, reducing the impact on the skyline to our residents to the south. And we took proper care that even these entrance drives coming into their entrances and their driveways will have proper screening so that even at night, when cars are pulling in there, the streetlights will be hidden from view, again, being neighborly. And, and by the way, that conservation there, that tree conservation is abhorrent to both us and to our neighbors because we're both looking at that. So we like having that tree line there, it provides a lot of privacy. I was doing it again, so I'm going to do this manually. And again, we created opportunities for gathering places with, again, the pool house located, we think, at a very central location to development. And there is some parking on the street right there, so if you have friends, neighbors, guests, they have a place to, to park close proximity to that pool. So that section, I mentioned to you, that site section, you'll see here that this is an overall site section looking west. And that little box you're, you're seeing here is showing in the next slide, something that's closer in that view. So again, that tree line remains. You'll see to the left, those white boxes, those are more or less representing the location of the houses to the south. You also notice that there's a dimension there of one hundred and sixty feet. So to their north face of those homes, to our property line is one hundred and sixty feet. And then we have sixty-five foot setback between us and the property line. Normally, for our RP three, next to a residential development, it's only thirty feet. So this is sixty-five feet, which we think is better for all involved with the project. This project was inspired by two things. The pervasive use of the KC Tudor fabric that's in Kansas City, which we've all seen, right? The Diebel Tudors, for example, to be more specific. And also the English cottages, you find that dot, the bucolic landscape in the United Kingdom. We liked both of those and combined those into pedagogy and in our culture, how we develop these units. So they have detail, they have really nice front entrances that are covered, they have wraparound porches that walk out, basements I mentioned. And the use of materials that are both traditional and modern and will provide, we think, great maintenance, low maintenance provisions throughout the, the life of the houses. You'll see here some of the details that we borrowed that were inspirational to us. This materials palette, again, is something we had shown to the planning staff with a lot of detail to make sure that they have, again, low maintenance provisions, that we use energy-conscious development in, in construction. So these homes are hopefully maintenance provided. Now noted, that we will have an HOA, HOA throughout the development so that we, we, we handle everything that's happening within that development, the landscape, the plowing that was mentioned, the lawn care, it's all baked into the equation for this development. As mentioned, the elevations, we, we created a number of different types of units, two, three, fourplexes, most of which have, again, the aforementioned to walkout basements. We have the provision that you could have the outside decks in the back, that can provide, again, screen and porches if they chose. And, and actually meaningful, meaningful front entrances, we thought that was important. And providing detail even for the garages to give them some personality and some detail. This view right here is looking southwest and seeing how the development is addressing the hard corner of Mission Road and one hundred thirty-seventh street. Again, we'll have the sidewalks wrapped all the way around the development, I'll go, again, working with the staff. We have a, a working sidewalk that wraps around the private drives within the development. And, and creating opportunity for even some de facto parking that's in close proximity to the pool house. You see that little pill right there, that little green space in the middle? Those drives are actually a little bit wider than usual, so you could have some parking there that is proximate, again, to the, the pool house. View looking directly south. And you see the, the neighbors off to the south, they're just represented as white boxes, but you see how that tree line, we, we think, provides a really nice backdrop to both our units and to theirs. A view at the west side, right before you get to the panhandle and, and the entrance to that private drive leading into those units there. And some close-up views at, at important entrances. And you'll see here how we have the, the wraparound porches in some locations, the entry marker where it says Waterford or what we deem to be the right name for the development. And some of the detail we have provided for the units. Again, this is a corner unit with a meaningful front porch that's covered. The, the use of dormers and materials and a rich fabric, we think, provides a lot of personality for these homes. And even in the evening, we'll have careful use of landscaping and some ambient lighting, ground-mounted lighting that will provide, we think, a wonderful and meaningful experience for those who live there. Yes, there are private streets, and yes, we do have the, the appropriate street lighting that we have to meet the photometrics necessary for the community so that we have proper and safe lighting throughout as well as the ambient lighting and lighting that's on the buildings themselves. Some of the detail we have here, in addition to the wraparound porches, we have built-in window boxes. The use of both metal and asphallic roof provide, I think, again, a rich, a rich tapestry of materials we're using throughout. Here's an evening shot of the pool house, it also becomes a community center. And inside, we'll have the ability to show movies, to have gathering places, events within that space, culminating with the pool itself for the residents who are there, which will have cabanas and, and covered canopies and a barbecue throughout. So this becomes a, a very, we think, meaningful space that a lot of folks will love to have in their neighborhood. Again, the, the east entrance showing the entry marker where we, we baked in the idea of having a small waterfall as part of the monument sign, we think is very attractive. And a night shot, again, that same image that we had shown you earlier that was looking to the southwest. Now I'd like to get out of this and show you the video.
If I may, while we have that moment of transition, I think if you switched Waterford to Waterfall. Yes, you've got it, and it's.
I think, I think we're open.
I'd already, I already thought of that before you had it on your, your entryway, it's perfect.
So here, here's the video that, that gives you a bird's eye that will also drive down deeper into the spaces to really give you a feel what it's like to be a pedestrian walking within the development. And this will go like during the diurnal period, from a daytime view to evening as you roll around. Sorry, I don't have any music for this. We worked closely with staff to make sure we had proper landscaping, street trees, the use of hardscape and landscape throughout. And, and that, that tree line we're showing there, yeah, it's full foliage, but that's about what they are. They are, they're very robust trees that will provide, we think, an important screen to the development. So the intent is this becomes a neighborhood, an enclave that people love to be here. Maybe they're here full-time, maybe they aren't, hard for us to know. We're always surprised as to who would move in this development. Sometimes you guess, sometimes you guess wrong. We think it has a great appeal to really a, a, a very broad demographic that could be here. And these would be considered, to a certain degree, more affordable than your single-family homes you're saying built right now in Lee Wood. So we think it also provides an important entry point for folks who would like to live here. And that concludes my presentation. Doug, do you have any comments you'd like to make?
I'll hire you guys in front of the, you guys could be the name committee. You know, we tasked Scott with building a community so many times in, well, all of Johnson County. Everybody comes in, they come in their garage, they go to the back, they have privacy fence, and nobody knows their neighbor. I just met my neighbor because my son ran into his daughter's car, and it's the first time I'd met him, I'd been there for two years. So we're not very good at that, and so I tasked him with creating some common areas and some real front porches. You know, when my parents grew up, they knew everybody because they were in the front porch. And I think, I think he knocked it out of the park, there's a lot of fire pits that are common areas that are intimate, that'll attract six or seven of the neighbors, there's seven or eight of those throughout, there's a lot of walkability in this. We kept the heights to twenty-six. The Majestic of Lee Wood, which was the independent living, that was us as well, that was almost forty feet. And so it was, it was much taller, you are correct, it's a good memory, but.
All right, question for the applicant, Ms. Larson.
I think you have a, a really promising development. I love the diversity of housing that expands our offering in Lee Wood. The ownership component, I think, is super important and I fully support. I was going to ask about the Waterford name, I love Waterfall or something else, water, since you've incorporated these water features with the fountains and the, I love the sixty-five foot tree preservation. The one question I have is parking. So these, and I love the AI presentation, that's kind of a, a cutting edge, love that. Parking, can you talk to us about parking? These are lovely, I think, these are units that would have a great appeal across many age groups. And, but they're going to have visitors to their homes and especially in this nine hundred, thousand to million price range, you're going to invite some folks over, tell us about parking.
Okay, so I think in the report that was given to you by the planning staff, we have two for, two per unit parking for each of the residents. And so we have garages, there are always going to be two cars, plus there's a driveway in front of it, an entrance apron that's also long enough for two more cars to be out there if they have, folks are coming to see them. Furthermore, we have, it's kind of hard to see with this cursor, but see at these, end, end of these, these driveways, we have parking at the end of each one of those. So right there, if I can show you my cursor. See those, those are marching all the way along, see that car right there? Yeah, so, so those also have two more cars, each one of those little enclaves, those neighborhoods. And then further, we have the five cars I mentioned that are parking along the street where the pool area is. See those five right there? And then along, around this pill, I may have not been very clear, that's an extra wide drive lane there. And so we didn't want to stripe necessarily, but around that pill, there's enough, enough parking there for parallel parking there as well, which is, we're not including that in our, in our calculations, it's becomes inherent that we've had that as part of the development so you can park there as well. So we, we think we've provided enough parking, to your point, for visitors to come here and, and experience the development.
I, I did read those comments in the Planning Commission transcript. My concern is that the, the pill area where there would be parking that would maybe or maybe not be striped is kind of a, a little bit of a distance from, say, some of the other units. And so I am glad to know about the two spots at the end of those streets, like the ones that back up to the, or side up to the tree preservation area. How about the units along one hundred and thirty-seventh street, other than the driveway? How about the units along 137th Street, other than the driveway itself? Is there anywhere to park in that area?
Well, probably again around that triangular green space, they could park there as well.
Cars could be parked there?
Yeah. And another thing you should note is that the, the street section, the private street section is 26 feet wide that runs around the development from, well, it's that L configuration. So if I were to trace that, that also allows for folks to park along that street as well.
Oh, okay, so they can park along there?
That's right, because it's wide enough to accommodate on-street parking at that location.
On one side or both?
One side.
On, okay.
Which is why we also reduce the number of curb cuts coming out that road, right? So it, it allows for convenient parking along those, along that street.
Okay. And the triangle area?
Right here?
Yes. How many cars do you think could be parked in that vicinity?
Yeah, prob- probably four.
It's hard to gauge the scale.
Four comfortably.
Four?
Yeah.
Okay.
I wish there was a car over there to give you some scale, but I don't have one there.
Okay. Um, well, that, that is helpful. That's more than I thought and more than what I, I read in the, when I was reading the transcript. So, um, thank you for those comments.
Sure. Thank you, Ms. Larson. Other questions? Yes, Ms. Gayed.
I don't have any questions, I just wanted to commend you on the thoughtfulness of the design of this. I think it looks beautiful and I agree with Ms. Larson's comments about the diversity of housing that we're looking for in Leewood, so I think this is a, would be a great addition. And I will say, one thing, a good thing and a bad thing about such detailed renderings is that you've given us a great visual of what it should be, but then that's the expectation, right? That's what, that's what we will hold it to. So it does look beautiful and I think much-needed project in, in Leewood and I could, I definitely agree that there is a wide variety that would be interested in a project like this.
Thank you. It should also be noteworthy that even though these have a certain commonality in their configuration, we have a palette from the interiors group who's working with us, you have a selection between four different styles. So it could be traditional, modern, transitional, rustic, but it's all within the same building envelope. So each resident has the ability to personalize his or her space when they decide to buy there.
Beautiful, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Kane.
Um, I don't know if you all read this or heard this, but Aventino Development sold the last two lots to, sold the last two lots, so they're finishing up. And a lot of people said that never could be done and not only is, did it happen, it happened wildly successful. I heard last week, or this, today's only Monday, so it must have been last week, that the sales team that was on Aventino is being moved over to the Lashbrook Development because they did such a stellar job. So, so I think, and I'm, thank you for this, this is, this is hitting on everything that I, I'm vehemently fighting for and they get so sick of listening to me, um, you know, you're hitting the, you're lowering the density, you're lowering the height, you have the ownership, it's a, it's a new form, kind of sort of a new form of housing. So as far as I'm concerned, my one personal opinion, my one vote, check, check, check. It is, is, I see this as showing once again that, that Leewood is a place of distinction. Are we like every other city? Heck no. Is that why you want to be in our city? Probably so, right? So, um, thank you for bringing something of this caliber. Thank you for the proper care, I love that word, sir. Being neighborly, the Kansas City Tudor, I'm reading this fascinating book about Brookside, the Brookside Development and J.C. Nichols and the Tudor and borrowing practices from old Europe and the, the, not only the style, but the quality, right? So you look at this, you're going to see, it is quality, right? Personally, I think Leewood screams, we are quality, we are solid, we are distinct. And I don't think we need to apologize for that. So thank you for recognizing that and thank you for giving us what we need and what we want and what our residents are just crying for. I think it can be done, it's being done, this, I think, will be, to my, my premonition is, is a, is a residential realtor, this will be wildly successful because of the ownership component. If these were a bunch of rentals, I think that's a different animal, right? So, uh, thank you for this and look at us and what's happening on 135th Street. We're going uphill, we're not going downhill. We have not bowed to the pressure, um, we don't need to, in my personal opinion. We can hold steady and we can in the end make it distinctive and make it worthy, right, of what we want and our residents want. So, thank you, I appreciate this. I am A, A+ in support.
So, Ms. Kane, was there a question there?
No, no, just a soliloquy.
We're kind of in the question section here.
I'm sorry.
It's all right.
What?
That opportunity is on the way. Yes, Ms. Phil.
Um, I was wondering if you've given any thought to landscaping, I know it was in your wonderful 3D model, but I'm big on being part of the Monarch Trail and natives that encourage bees and pollinators so it, to the, and plus, once, I, I'm just amazed how once you get that started, those, those plants are threefold their size and they require so little maintenance from year to year, so I hope you'll incorporate that. I love the tulips, I really do, but I also want to have something for our bees and butterflies, so.
I think we have in our plant palette some pollinators that attracts butterflies. I, I can't tell you that, that's kind of beyond my purview, but-
Swamp milkweed is what you need for Monarch Swamp Milkweed, thank you.
Good to note that that's important to you, we'll, we'll look into that.
Ms. Harrison.
Thank you. The property bit that's west of Building Six, I read about a water retention bin or basin or something.
There's an existing detention and then we're also putting in an additional as required by Public Works.
So, at the end of the day, does that just look like green space?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Yeah, it's underground.
Yeah, it's all underground. So it'll just look like it is there.
But from the street, it, it looks like a dog park or a great place to-
It may end up being a dog park or a place for them to take their dogs to walk.
And the city made sure, went through all the requirements through Mark to make sure it's water quantity and water quality. So I think the calculations-
And that's where we actually touch Aventino, because then they, they, they take that same taper and expand out.
Okay.
And it is amazing how quickly they've sold.
It is. But that can't, that surface lot could not serve as later on, someday if you needed it, more surface parking to address Ms. Larson's question about parking. You can't turn it because-
Get away from the green that everybody loves.
No, I love green, but I just wanted to make sure that someday you can't come back and say, well, we're going to turn this into parking because we need it.
We, we really can't add any more impervious material.
Okay.
We made sure that we are having a proper balance there between the green space and the impervious, so there's no more water runoff that we could handle.
There's a development slightly to the northeast of this that somehow sold us on an idea that, well, if we need to, we'll come back in a few years and we'll add some more parking here, here, and here. And I just didn't, I didn't love it when I heard it.
That, that would be a disservice to our, our neighbors here if we do that.
Well, and to the residents. Our HOA is pretty tight and doesn't limit the residents very little on what they can do. They actually don't own anything outside the peripheral of their house. Everything else is common area. It'll be taken care of by the-
Yeah, and that, that's a good point, because the way it's designed is that they can't expand even their improvement material on their unit.
So our HOA is very restrictive in that.
Okay.
To protect everybody in it.
Very good.
Other questions? All right, thank you both, a very good presentation, I appreciate that. Brings us now to a discussion of what people think about this particular subdivision.
Sorry.
That's quite all right, that's quite all right. I know you get excited about such things, we all do, so no worries. But again, I, I would encourage additional discussion. I, I know early on in the presentation, there was some discussion about private streets, but that didn't seem to, to go to the applicant in too much great shape, so I don't know if people are still concerned about private streets or not. So, comments, question, or not questions, but comments or discussion? Ms. Phil.
I would just join the chorus, it's very pleased, especially the neighborhood feel of it, because as we were hearing from residents when we talked about 96th and Lee, loneliness is a thing and coming in and going in your garage door and coming back out and never seeing the light of day, much less your neighbors, this, I think, is a great way for people to naturally come together and will, you know, that, that front porch is really important. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Phil. Ms. Harrison?
Um, I would second the comments of praise that you've heard from the governing body. Maybe you've been watching meetings for the last couple of years and you've heard us beg, plead, and ask very nicely for diversified housing options for our residents without going up. And so thank you for listening to what, what we've been saying. I especially like the, the fact that these are 16 units attached, that there's space in between them and that you listen to the folks to the south. Am I correct in thinking, maybe Julie knows this, maybe this would be a David, is this old Sharp family property? Maybe the guy's over there. It is. It is Sharp family, uncle, aunt, some great aunt's property. So there's your naming right there, something about the Sharps, because there's quite a cool history there about how much of that part of-
We've been friends since the sales process, only took three and a half years.
There you go. It wasn't Farmer Stew's fault. It is a great family, many of us up here call them dear friends. So I, I jest, but I'm not kidding when I say maybe the naming is right there. Sharpshire, you know, Sharp something British, you know, we can do, we can do it. I'll get on that committee for you to help you rename this. But thank you for listening and thank you for bringing a unique product to the 135th Street corridor. I'm quite, quite pleased with this.
Thank you, Ms. Harrison. Are there any other comments or questions? If not, do I hear a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Kane, thank you, Ms. Larson. Because this is an ordinance that requires a rule call vote, I would ask the clerk to call the rule, please.
Mrs. Phil.
Aye.
Mr. Sipple?
Aye.
Mrs. Larson?
Aye.
Mrs. Kane?
Aye.
Mr., uh, uh, Mrs. Harrison?
Aye.
Mrs. Gayed, or Ms. Gayed?
Aye.
And Dr. Castor?
Aye.
And Mr. Sunkel is not present.
I have seven votes in favor with Mr. Sunkel not being present, so the ordinance is unanimously adopted. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Can I ask, when, when are you going to break ground and when do you think you'll have your first units available?
Please come forward.
We're hoping in the next 60 days to break ground and then we're going to phase it and put in a couple models and then build about the first 12 units and then as they sell, that's the million-dollar question, but we're, we think they'll sell out in about 18 months, that's what our marketing team's telling us.
And you think that your model home and your first ones will be available?
Be ready probably May or June of next year.
Okay, good luck.
And then sales thing, thank you.
Thank you, sir. The governing body now calls Planning Commission Case Number 45-25, which is an ordinance approving a special use permit and revised preliminary plan for Parkway Plaza, Jameson Medical Building located north of 135th Street and west of Briar Street. Ms. Hurley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. As you said, this is a request for a special use permit and a revised preliminary plan for the Parkway Plaza to allow for construction of Jameson Medical Building. Planning Commission did vote eight to zero to recommend approval of this at their June meeting. This is a request to allow construction of a 6,500-square-foot, single-story medical office building with a future 5,500-square-foot expansion. The previously approved preliminary plan showed a 12,500-square-foot retail building on this lot, so roughly in line with the size on that. So just to kind of orient you, again, it's the lot that you can see highlighted in the blue a little bit over there on the left side of your screen. And just to show the overall Parkway Plaza development, that is, at this point, for the most part, built out, there is one lot up to the north of this, adjacent to the existing Demdeco Building that's still available, and then the lot just to the south of this subject property is still available. And then just to the northeast over closer to Row, that area that there are some more approved of the condo buildings on that have not been built, that is pretty much what's left. And then there's one lot just to the north of the Starbucks, down there closer to 135th. But for the most part, Parkway Plaza is getting fairly close to being built out. And then just the overall site plan, again, to show you, the subject site is over there highlighted in red over to the left, and then, again, that's just the existing approved preliminary, the, the existing approved development plan for the site as a whole. And that's just a little bit zoomed into this site, so that is, you can see the, more of the gray shaded building would be the initial phase of this and then over to the left would be where they would be looking at expanding in the future potentially. So, uh, there is associated parking that would be constructed as part of this and the, again, the Planning Commission did recommend approval of this, eight to zero. I can answer any questions that you might have and the applicant is here as well.
Thank you, Ms. Hurley. Questions for Ms. Hurley this evening? If there are none, I would invite the applicant to step forward and if you could state your name and your address, we're interested in what you have to say.
Hello, my name is Vic Mosby. I'm with Anchor Architectural Consulting Incorporated here to represent Dr. Jameson and the property. We've worked with staff on this project, it's been really great and we're happy with all the stipulations they've come up with and we're here for any questions.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Mosby? Ms. Phil.
Can I make the same request that you make, consideration of very heat tolerant and native plants? They do so much better in our Kansas weather, so as you're landscaping, please keep that in mind.
We'll definitely do that, absolutely.
Other questions? Mr. Mosby, thank you very much, no controversy tonight.
Yeah.
Ms. Larson, you look like you might have a motion.
Well, I just wanted to welcome the Jameson Medical Building to Leewood. I think it'll be a great addition to Parkway Plaza and motion to approve.
Great, is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Larson, thank you, Ms. Phil. Is there any discussion over the proposal? If not, again, this is an ordinance which calls for a rule call vote and I would ask the clerk to call the rule, please.
Dr. Castor?
Aye.
Ms. Gayed?
Aye.
Ms. Harrison?
Aye.
Mrs. Kane?
Aye.
Mrs. Larson?
Aye.
Mrs. Phil?
Aye.
Mr. Sipple?
Aye.
And Mr. Sunkel is absent?
Thank you, I have a seven to zero vote and the ordinance is unanimously adopted. Next, we'll call case, Planning Commission Case Number 61-25, which is an ordinance approving a special use permit, preliminary plan, final plan, and final plat for East Village Chase Bank located north of 135th Street and west of State Line Road. Ms. Hurley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. Again, this is a request for special use permit, preliminary plan, final plan, and final plat for the Chase Bank located in the East Village Development. This particular parcel is located at the very southeast corner at the intersection basically of State Line Road and 135th Street. Again, the Planning Commission did review this and recommend approval, eight to zero at their June 24th meeting. This is about a 1.2-acre parcel. The special use permit is required for the ancillary drive-through ITM that is associated with the bank. The previously approved preliminary plan and final plan did call for a 9,000-square-foot bank. The bank that is proposed as part of this is a 3,400-square-foot bank, so substantially smaller, as is needed for the particular user. So again, just to orient you, the particular parcel out there in question is highlighted in blue on your screen, you can see where that is in relation to 135th Street and State And then this that we're looking at is the, that corner on the existing approved development plan, you can see the bank slash retail building down there shown at 9,000 square feet. And then this is the proposed bank. So same overall layout and orientation, just the footprint of the building is much smaller, but the, the way the parking and the drive-through are laid out in relation to the actual building itself did stay the same.
While you're on that one, can you show me where the road is off of State Line? I'm losing my orientation.
So, State Line is just off of this clip that I put on there over to the right side of your screen.
So where's the drive coming in? Where will you come in to get to that bank?
So you will come in, uh, let me go back to, I don't have a clip of the overall, but you can kind of see on this is the previously approved one. So this is a little bit down in the, the parking layout for the, the commercial side of East Village over here. So you would be accessing this Chase Bank either from an entrance to the north of this along State Line or to the west along 135th Street, so there's no direct access into this off of either of those roads. Again, you would be kind of coming through the internal drive network in the East Village Development to get down to this bank location.
Okay, thank you.
And then just to show some of the- And then just to show some of the, um, building elevations, uh, this is just one sheet of them, just to give you an overall feel for the way the building is designed. So if you have any questions for me, I can answer those, and the applicant is here as well.
Thank you, Ms. Hurley. Dr. Castor?
I just had a question, um, for these sites, when the first retail building of several in a little cluster, do we typically ask the applicants to build the parking for all of the potential areas, or we just say, since your building only needs 15 parking spaces, that's all that you need to build at the very beginning?
So you can see on the, the site plan that I have up here for you, what's colored, basically, is what they have to build. So they're building what is required for their particular use, uh, they are required to meet what's approved for those other buildings in the development, so that it can seamlessly tie in when those do come through, um, but they don't have to build all the parking lot for the, the whole development to get down there.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions for Ms. Hurley? Ms. Harrison?
For the applicant.
Yep. Uh, Ms. Hurley, if you could go back to, um, the arrow photo, please. So, I just, I find it interesting, uh, that even with all the work that's been done, the taxiways still show up on the, on the photo. This is a photo we ought to keep, um, for posterity's sake, and a lot of the fact that that was once an airport, and again, it's just remarkable to me that the taxiway still shows up on there. And it is also remarkable to me that, uh, that banks are still building buildings, but we'll ask the applicant about that when they come forward. Any other questions for Ms. Hurley? If not, I would invite the applicant to come forward, and if you could state your name and address, please, we'd be grateful.
Good evening, Andrew Gribble with Kimley Horn, um, 805 Pennsylvania, Kansas City, Missouri, 64103.
And I'm sorry, your last name again was?
Gribble, G-R-I-B-B-L-E.
Thanks.
Happy to answer any questions that you guys may have.
Questions for Mr. Gribble and Ms. Harrison?
And, and you're with Chase?
No, I'm with Kimley Horn, we're the civil engineer.
Okay, so, my question is about the proximity of Chase Banks around the metro. Are they planning to leave 119th and Row, because they don't generally build branches this close to each other, but you probably aren't in a position to answer that question?
I believe there are some people online that may be able to answer that question.
Hello up there.
Hi, this is Anthony Oliver with BDG Architects, and we actually are not privy to that type of information from Chase Bank, with their future needs or, uh, relocations, uh, we're not involved in that information with the bank.
Very good.
Thank you, Mr. Oliver.
Sure.
Anything else?
Well, I would just remind the council that, um, banks, as I, as I understand it, financial institutions are not tax-paying businesses, so, um, it was kind of a shock to us a few years back, when one went in on the, what we call the gold corner of Leewood, because we did feel like we were losing a great deal of tax, potential sales tax income, when the dean in DeLuca turned into a Chase Bank, but, um, this corner, I, I support it fully, but I just, I, I, I do think it's interesting, as the mayor alluded, in a day and age when we're doing all of our banking online, that they're still wanting to build brick and mortar banks, but hey, good for you, take the business, um, so that, that's interesting, but they're not here to answer those questions, so, thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Gribble? If not, thank you, Mr. Gribble, we appreciate your being here, and thank you, Mr. Oliver, we appreciate your, uh, tuning in as well. That really takes us to a discussion, and, and again, I would echo what Ms. Harrison said, it's interesting, uh, no, no judgment intended at all, that in this day and age, banks are still interested in building brick and mortar, um, but it is, it's, and I will also say that I think it's a, an interesting and a good first step to seeing actual, um, development, uh, on the commercial part of East Village, um, hopefully it's the first of a number to come. Ms. Kane?
Um, yeah, mine's just an observation, also, is, um, the fact that this is only a one-story building, and it's, uh, 22 feet high, and, and significantly smaller than what they had originally proposed, so that's kind of counterintuitive, that the bigger, denser, higher was gonna be along State Line Road on purpose, right? So now we have a smaller one-story building on the, the primary corner of, of State Line Road and 135th. I think as far as an entrance to Leewood, and it being more welcoming, as opposed to imposing to, you know, cross over to Leewood, and not have a four-story building or something there, would actually benefit the city, but it is, is absolutely dead opposite of what we thought was gonna happen and what was being proposed, that it was gonna be taller and denser along State Line Road, um, and that, that, that commercial development. So this is, this is dead opposite, but I think in the end, I hope it, it serves that development well, but it is contrary to the, the original, the original plan, um, but, and then this is the only second Chase in the city of Leewood, we have one right here, is the first, was the first.
I believe that's the case, that this would just be the second, yeah.
That was the first to go, the first Chase to go in the city of Leewood, and this'll be the second Chase, which is kind of, kind of interesting, just observations. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kane. Other comments? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Ms. Larson.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Harrison. Additional discussion of the motion? If not, again, this is another ordinance which recalls a roll call, which requires a roll call vote, and I would ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Ms. Gayed?
Aye.
Ms. Harrison?
Aye.
Ms. Kane?
Aye.
Mrs. Phyllis?
Aye.
Mrs. Larson?
Aye.
Dr. Castor?
Aye.
Mr. Sipple?
Aye.
And Mr. Sunkel is absent.
Thank you, I have a seven to zero vote, and the ordinance is unanimously adopted. Thank you very much. Last, uh, for this section of the agenda, we call Planning Commission Case Number 57-25, which is the ordinance approving the 2025 update to the comprehensive plan of the city of Leewood, Johnson County, Kansas, and actually, might well be the last annual update of this particular plan. Ms. Hurley, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, and as you said, hopefully this is the last update of our current comprehensive plan, since we did just kick off our process for developing a new comprehensive plan, so, uh, you might be wondering why we'd be doing an update to our existing one, when we're, we've got a consultant coming on to do our new one. Uh, Kansas statute does require any city that has a comprehensive plan to update their plan annually, so this is kind of a little bit of housekeeping to fulfill that statutory requirement. So, uh, typically, just to kind of go over the basics of updating a comprehensive plan, you wouldn't be looking at changing goals and objectives and things like that, since you would typically go through a pretty extensive public, uh, input process for that, and we wouldn't want to just sort of administratively amongst ourselves change what the citizens, uh, put so much work into. So, what we look at in updating these every year is taking into account any development that's taken place over the course of the past year, uh, looking for any sort of inconsistencies, just making sure that the information is there and is current and relevant to what we have, uh, been building in the city. So that's what this update is, um, updated a few developments that have come online over the last year, changed, um, the demographic information based on the latest, uh, census data that we have available to us, and so, again, it's really just, uh, kind of some housekeeping-type issues, fulfilling that requirement that we have, and keeping this updated year to year, and hopefully, uh, this time next year, or close to it, we will have a whole new plan to take a look at and start off on that process.
Thank you, Ms. Hurley. Questions for Ms. Hurley? Uh, Ms. Hurley, I have, pardon me, just one, um, in the section, and I don't have it here in front of me, I have a little malfunction with my iPad here, but, uh, in the section that talks about the demographics, uh, the, it reported the median value of a home in Leewood in 2023 was $689, $689,800, and I believe that was based on, do you call it the ACS, um, mid, kind of midterm census, uh, report?
Correct, yeah, the American Community Survey.
How, how does that relate to, uh, the information that we get from the Johnson County Appraiser every year, and then the follow-on is, why use the ACS report as opposed to the, uh, county appraisers' report for those kinds of statistics?
That is a good question, I honestly am not sure where the Census Bureau pulls their information on property values from, I would guess they pull them from county appraisal's office, um, but I'm not totally sure. In terms of why we would use that information, um, my guess would be that that's what we've done historically, year to year, in updating this, is just pulled all of that information from the census, instead of pulling it from bits and pieces, so just maintaining that consistency, uh, but I will sure make note to take a look at that, and see how that figure from the census compares with what we get from the county, to see if those line up, um, and I am curious myself, actually, where the census gets that property value information from, so I will find an answer, and, uh, let you guys know, just so we all have that information.
Thank you, Ms. Hurley. Other questions for Ms. Hurley? If not, uh, this does not call for a public hearing, so, um, is there discussion over the comprehensive plan and the update to it? If not, do I hear a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Thank, oh, I'm now confused. Dr. Castor?
I'm so moved.
And Ms. Larson has a second, thank you, confusing me late at the evening here, um, and again, because it is an ordinance, it does recall, require a roll call vote, and I would ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Ms. Harrison?
Aye.
Dr. Castor?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mrs. Phyllis?
Aye.
Ms. Gayed?
Aye.
Mrs. Kane?
Aye.
Mr. Sipple?
Aye.
And, or, Mr. Sunkel is absent.
Thank you, again, I come up with a seven to zero vote, uh, and the ordinance is unanimously adopted. Now, I don't believe there's any old business, nor is there any new business, unless a governing body member would ask. Uh, I would note that we have upcoming meetings on Monday, August the 4th, um, Monday, August the 18th, uh, the governing body meeting has been canceled, and we will, um, have that meeting, let's see, have I got this confused already? Nope, we have that canceled, and then August the 25th, um, uh, we have the special call meeting coming up, and then also, just to remind everybody, that, uh, Monday, September the 1st, which would ordinarily be a governing body meeting day, is, uh, Labor Day, and so we will move, uh, that meeting to Tuesday, September 2nd. Ms. Satter, anything else for the good of the governing body? Anything from the governing body members?[1781.32]